All rise, please.
We stand as one nation under God, the universal, representative and justice for our heart.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the little late start. We had some litigation matters to discuss in executive session. And we also had the opportunity to interview two younger people for positions on our boards and commissions. And before we get any further, I would like to make a motion that Daniel Basukio be appointed to the Park and Rec Board as a youth representative.
I'll second that motion.
Is there a question or comment on that? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And also, I'd like to move that Courtney Kaufman be appointed to the Community Performing Arts Council. She's a junior at Central Bucks West. I think Daniel was a sophomore at CB South. But Courtney has expressed an interest in being on our Performing Arts Council. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Ms. Manager, would you please make sure that these folks get a letter when the meetings are? We have their email addresses, so they get their board packets and things and any upcoming events.
Thank you.
Okay. Any visitor or public comment? I would like to note for the record, we have a special guest tonight, Zachary Miller, who is working on his Eagle Scout badge. Zachary, do you care to address the board in any way? He's here to attend a public meeting in satisfaction of his community service, or which one?
Communications merit badge.
Communications merit badge. I better do a good job communicating tonight, people. Thank you. Welcome. If you have any questions as we go, don't hesitate. The next meeting of this board is Tuesday, April 17th. Dulles Town Township Administrative Offices will be closed on Good Friday, that's this Friday, April 6th. Are we open Monday?
Yes.
The Fund Development Subcommittee of the Ways and Means Committee is going to hold a special meeting on April 11th at 9:00 a.m. Everyone is welcome. That meeting will be here. Pico Green Region Invasive Species Educational Trail dedication is Friday, April 27th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Central Park Environmental Education Area. Healthy Kids Get Up, Get Out, and Play, Saturday, April 28, 2012, at 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Central Park. It's being hosted in conjunction with CB Cares and the Central Bucks Y N C A. Local Government Week. We have some exciting things planned for people here on the board to participate in our school systems. It's April 16 through the 20th. Touch a Truck, Saturday, May 5th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Central Park. It's one of the funnest things we do here. The Shred Event. Is that what that is? Shred? Is that how you spell that? For Dulles Town Township residents, only, is Saturday, May 12th, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the Administration Building here. And the Annual Township Golf Outing, Monday, June 4th, Dulles Town Country Club this year. Registration deadline is May 18th. We'd love to have golfers, seeing golfers, I see golfers out here. Put your foursomes together. All right. Next item on the agenda, Minutes' Approval for March 20th, 2012.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or corrections? I have one. I wasn't here, but I have a suggestion of a correction on page 2, third paragraph. Is referenced Ms. Goldstein? I suspect that means Ms. Goldman.
Oh.
There was no G in Goldstein here that night? Is there, are there motions or second? All in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
It's four with one abstention. Oh, wait. Who wasn't here?
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions. Let's fess up. Okay. Because I watched it web streaming. I watched, I participated in the meeting when I was in Florida.
You can't get away with anything anymore, yeah.
I watched it online. I saw everything. Okay. Any correspondence? No. Reports from the solicitor?
I have nothing we want to talk about later in the Agenda, Madam Chief, or person.
Township engineer?
Nothing at this time.
I love it when you say that. Police chief?
Nothing.
Township manager, resident notification via email.
Yes, I just have one thing. We are going to start to do email notifications for our residents. We are going to create a Google group that will allow our residents to register with us. They'll be able to do that through our website. And we will be able to send important messages to them, such as, there's a tree down on Lower State Road, or we're having a concert tonight, or that the concert is raining and we need to go inside. Dulles Town Borough and several of other municipality neighbors are doing these. And we feel it's a way to continue to improve our communication with our residents. So we just wanted to let you know that we're going to be launching that this week.
With this email notification for residents, could that be by group? For example, the Colonial Heritage folks would have a notice?
No, it would be one general.
One general.
Big group.
Okay. All right. Got it. Any questions or comments about that?
No, it's a great idea.
Me too. Supervisor's comments. Shaun, how may we start with you?
Okay. Just two items. One, after a meeting, just to reiterate that the Fund Development Subcommittee, the Ways and Means, just encourage everybody to come out who's watching, either here tonight or online, or on TV. We had a great first meeting, I think. We had about 18, 19 people in attendance. We encourage more residents to come out. This next meeting of the Ways and Means, a special meeting, will be used to hash out a lot of those ideas, to go forward and set up another, yet another meeting, keep the ball rolling. The second, I think the request from board that we look at Resolution Number 1363, which is the procedure for the naming of parks and facilities, and merely to open it, see if it needs any updating, look at it compared to other township, other municipal, similar ordinances. Not looking to do anything with it at this time, just to review it.
Sounds like a good idea. Put it on the Agenda for the next meeting?
I'd like to, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Tom, you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing. We had our audit given back to us. And on that, we had a $5,437,440 fund balance, which I thought was exciting, that Dick showed on the audit, which we have just given to us. And I just want to pay, thank you, board, for working hard to make sure that it's successful.
Clarify, that's restricted and unrestricted ones?
Yes.
Right, okay. Ms. Manager?
I don't really have anything to update today, but I did want to say that I thought it was really great that we had some students coming out today to be a part of our boards. So I think that's really exciting, that young kids are getting involved in the community. And I'm glad to see Zach Miller here. I just want to point out that the Millers are my neighbors. So congratulations on working towards your Eagle Scout. So, that's it.
Thank you. Rick?
Well, I'm disappointed none of my neighbors are here. But I'm, hopefully, they're all at home watching. That's the reason. I did want to make one comment. I've mentioned in the past about the Sensory Trail, which is for children who have disabilities, a wide spectrum from braille, to autism, to et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And the reason I keep bringing it up, the ball is rolling fast. We did a presentation at the Regional Autism Seminar. We were asked to come and have a booth there. So we've also had a couple of service clubs ask what they can do. We've had a couple of residents call. So the ball's really starting to move. So we're going to get into the position of starting some fundraising soon. So keep Sensory Trail in your mind somewhere, and your hand in your pocket when we come out to fundraise. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I want to thank Tom Scarborough for his excellent job sharing the meeting in my absence last meeting. Thank you very much. The, he did a great job, by the way. I'm liaison to the, what's it called? The Open Space Land Preservation Board, which met last night and authorized the, authorized that, the request to the Board of Supervisors, that it approve the, the request to the county for funding allocation for the preservation of open space on the two acre property located at, was it? 925. Sandy Ridge Road. It's a nine-plus acre parcel that was approved for subdivision, seven lots? I believe it's seven lots. The request is to preserve a little over seven of those acres. The acreage would front Sandy Ridge Road, which is very important to us, because we like to see the open space that we preserve. And the open space will be accessible, because what is planned is to farm that, and farm it for berries, that sort of thing, that they would sell then at a farm stand on the unreserved, or non-reserved, non-restricted property. So it's a great opportunity. We have $600-plus thousand of open space money. The seven acres, plus or minus two or three tenths, was valued at $750,000 for value. We had three appraisals, because they were kind of skewed. But the average cost per acre for the easement would be about $70,000. So that, the long and short of it is, seven acres at $70,000 is $490,000. The applicant, who happens to be Shaun Toohill, and let me say for the record, the application went in well before Mr. Toohill had any intentions of running for supervisor. This has been something that's been in the work for at least a year and a half, or two years. So, and he's not participating in this, except as a regular applicant, which is his right to do so. So he, they would be contributing the required 25% match that the township would have to contribute, and take a reduced amount in the, I'm going to get this number, I hope, right? It's $367,000, plus or minus $500, depending on the actual, exact percentage of the properties to be preserved. What the board has asked that I do is, is move the motion, or move it into the form of a motion, that the Board of Supervisors approve the request for the allocation, send it to the county board that has to approve such awards for easements and conservation monies. And also, well, let me amend that. What we need first is authorization to have the engineer go out and actually create the meets and bounds and the exact amount of land to be preserved. So I'm going to put that in the form of the first motion. Okay? Is there a second to that?
Yes.
And that is to authorize the engineer, you may not have to go out, because this is all on paper, but go out and take a look at precisely what amount is to be preserved.
And he'll need to do a meets and bounds description in order to have it attached to an agreement of sale that'll need to be done, and also the ultimate easement.
Correct. Thank you.
That is the township engineer.
That would be you.
Okay.
You keep saying the engineer.
Is there some other engineer that we don't?
Maybe Mr. Toohill had an engineer.
Oh, we're gonna, thank you. All in favor of the first motion?
I'd like to have a discussion, because I think it's, as you mentioned, it's a tandem motion, so.
There's just one motion on the table.
Right, but the second one's waiting, so I'd like to get my thoughts out before the second motion comes on the table. Yes, we've, I've been talking about, we just got this, which, you know, so I haven't had a chance to really look at this and study it, but in the past, and my impression, my understanding, is open space is something that we want to preserve for the township, so that, for the enjoyment of all the residents. So that when we drive down a road like Sandy Ridge, which we try to keep as undeveloped as possible, I'm for that. My concern here is, and I think we discussed this at prior meetings, the land behind the ridge, it's not visible from the road. And I don't see how it benefits the taxpayer to pay tax money for that back-end portion, when they're never going to see it and enjoy it. So that's my first concern. And my second is, I think Sandy Ridge is excellent, except it looks like part of it's carved out, so that even a house could be eventually built in this section where the proposed farmland is. So my understanding was, you know, no meets and bounds, but just a straight line across, and this be the easement, not the land that we can't see, and the land that's right up there on front where the proposed farm stand is. So for that reason, I'm, you know, not in favor of this motion.
Most of the acreage is going to be fronting Sandy Ridge. This pink, the pink outline, we have this pink outline. Is it just a rough drawing? None of this is written in stone, and it can all be moved around. I would think some of this can be moved around, so that satisfies your interest. This is a valuable piece of property, in that it's a huge expanse, it's in a residential community. I, you know, the thought of the board was, this is a great opportunity to preserve land that everyone could visibly enjoy, and also use in tandem with an agricultural use, that little kids can come, you know, like they do at Nonsuch, and try and surround on the picking berries and things. So it's an interactive opportunity. And it's probably more, we've looked at a lot of, a lot of open space potentials. And the Sandy Ridge is probably the one that is most available to the general public, in my feeling.
Well, right now, there's, here, I know that there's stuff planted. What is the intent with that?
Barbara, can I interject?
Sure.
Even though, of course, I would abstain from.
No, well, I'm asking you, because you would.
And for Rick, for Rick as well. I think for the sketch, that's before you there, the rough sketch, which is what the Open Space Committee requested, was, the attempt there was to keep the piece that was not restricted within the easement, to keep it contiguous, rather than having like a patchwork of, you know, piece over here, over here. And not to mention, it maybe doesn't show accurately there, but it's also, majority of the non-eased area is to the rear of the property, where the existing, like farmhouse is, and outbuildings and such. So you're correct, Rick, in your observation that the area that you can't see, like over the ridge, to the back of the property. That's where the majority of the property that is non-eased is. Beyond that, the only large wooded areas are included in it. The pond, I think there's an acre pond, that's included in it. And almost all the frontage on the road is included, except for that piece that jets out, you see on the north side of it. And that's because of the, I think the township's, the open space's disposition on the future use of the property in agricultural use, that you would want to, or they might want to exclude where you do that, say, via farm stand, or market, or something like that, needed to be in, outside of the easement area. That's the only reason that part out there is included in that. Otherwise, any agricultural use, I think, could be conducted with, is that?
Well, it, is that accurate?
There was some concern whether, where the, this area is the part that would not be included in the easement, right here. And this is the farm stand. There was some concern whether the farm stand would be allowed to be in the east area or not. So that's why, for this rough sketch purposes, this, the non-eased area is shown to include the farm stand, just to be on the safe side. It may be that this all is part of the east area.
I think, Rick, we would gladly include as much as we can within the easement area, but it seemed like the necessary step was to have, you know, like, engineer do that study, and then determine how much you can squeeze into that.
And I go back to, as Barbara said, the whole point is for visibility, and that's the reason I'm bringing this up. I can't see the back.
Well, it makes good sense.
And this, and again, we just got this. This doesn't appear to me that way, but if that's what you say it is, that's fine. It just seems like the ridge, I guess, is, would be a good line to draw, as far as we're not to have these, anything over the ridge, no easement, if we're on the same wavelength.
It would, except I think most of the wooded, and the environmental, if you will, area goes beyond that, goes all the way back to, back to the road, all the way in the back. You know, where the, there's a big row stand of trees, that's over probably two acres, that are, you could see from the front row, but that goes back, that would be beyond that line in the back.
And that's valuable land to preserve.
And then the pond, and the wetlands in the back. Sorry?
I would say that's valuable land to preserve.
Well, I don't know. I'm just trying to explain what, the logic, that's all. But that's, beyond that, I'm not.
And as far as this little piece here, there's two pieces, but as far as this little piece where the proposed farm stand is, personally, if you want to increase the size of the farm stand as time goes on and everything, I wouldn't have any problem at all with that. But I was hoping to get that in the easement, so that the frontage, at least for Sandy Ridge, would not have a house there someday. So I'm, and this is a rough sketch, I just got it, I really don't know, so.
Yeah, it is a rough sketch. And I do think there would be no objection to have adding additional frontage, but Barbara, correct me if I'm wrong, it has to be written, I mean, the resolution has, I mean, basically, easement has to be constructed or written, so that could be spelled out in there, I think.
Yeah, we, this is just, this, that pink line is subject to movement. All we're trying to do is get authorization to have the easement drafted, and the points put down on paper.
And you could ask him to do alternatives, too.
Exactly.
The description showing that piece, or showing all the way across, I mean, he can do whatever you tell him to do.
I hate to be impersonal about this, but the applicant has expressed a real interest in preserving as much as possible, and is flexible as to what areas will be, will be preserved.
And in that case, then, as long as there's other options brought forward, as far as the front piece here, being in the easement, and still being allowed to expand if he wants, and the discussion, and maybe I should come out and take a look, but at least one of the options, you understand what I'm saying, Mario, that if you can't see it, as Barbara said, part of this is visibility. If I can't visibly see it, it doesn't make sense, but if it's not visible, so I would be okay with that.
I mean, I think the first step would be to present a plan, or, let's say, I don't want to say a real plan, that shows the property, including the structures that are there, the topography. I know that this property was under, you know, proposed development a long time ago.
True.
And we still have, you know, those plans, and we can actually probably, you know, do something very quickly on just, you know, let's say sketches right now. No meets and bounds or anything like that, but a sketch on a real plan, showing, you know, what areas are in and what areas are out, and giving you that seven acres, or whatever the acreage the board desires, in different configurations for your review before, before anything else gets done.
And we've done that in the past for some of the projects that we've put in easements already with the county.
So there's a motion, the second, on least authorizing that preliminary look, see, forget what exactly I said, but engineer looking into creating alternatives and providing...
Providing some sketches for options.
Mr. Golds is concerned that a house could be built on that piece. Read it.
The way it's articulated now, perhaps, I'm, I don't, yes, that's his concern.
Okay. And so that hopefully we'll address that. It's good that you brought up Rick and Amy.
Motion in the second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I just, I have one comment.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I just want to make sure, just so I understand the motion, we're just making a motion for stuff to be put together, to look at, we're not, it's not going to come back with, this is what's been decided?
No.
Okay.
We'll have a look at it.
Okay.
And nothing will happen until there's an agreement of sale, signed and approved by this board at a public meeting, and the county authorizes the expenditure.
Okay. Okay, we'll leave it at that for now, right?
Abstain.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And you're abstaining, four and one abstention. I forget when we got this money from the county. 2008 was allocated to us.
Roughly.
Yeah. In the $92 million Open Space Task Force countywide, that was our allocation, 640, 660.
624, wait.
624. And this is our first opportunity to actually spend it on a substantial property. We've had other opportunities, but they have not been as accessible to the public as this one. So, and it's a valuable piece, and it's already approved development, there are going to be seven less houses. Seven less houses? No new houses, let's put it that way. And seven plus acres. So the board was pretty, the Open Space Land Preservation Board was, I'm pretty happy about this applicant, this applicant. So let me just put that out there. I have nothing further. Public hearing on the Amendment to the Garbage, Rubbish, and Refuge Ordinance.
Before I do that, I do want to comment on the fact that I had the privilege of attending Chief White's retirement dinner last week, and I think it was very well done. I wanted to give my congratulations to the township staff and the board, who participated in the event, and also helped plan it. I thought it was very well done.
Very well done.
It was certainly well deserved, but it was also very well done. With that in mind, tonight, you have a public hearing on a proposed ordinance. If you adopt it, all it does is changes the nature of the penalties for violations of Section 100-35 of your Township Code, related to the management of garbage, rubbish, and refuge within the township. And the change is that the old version, going back probably 30 or 40 years, made violations misdemeanors, and this changes to make it a summary offense, which is in keeping with state law, and certainly a whole lot more efficient. And you'll recall Chief White saying that it's hard to enforce something like this when there's a misdemeanor attached. So I have duly advertised the ordinance in the Daily Intelligencer, and a copy was provided to the Bucks County Law Library. Therefore, the appropriate notices have been provided, and you need to conduct a public hearing and decide what you're going to do.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve, so we can have comments to the audience.
The motion is to approve the ordinance. Let's open it up for any public comment or discussion. Is there a second to the motion?
No, second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the public? Questions or comments from the board? All right. We'll close the public hearing on this, and move the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Unfinished business, the Dulles Town Bicentennial Celebration of the Board. I will remember that there was a request that we waive substantial fees and costs associated with the use of our Showmobile, was presented by Ms. Goldman at the last meeting. And the request was made on behalf of the committee, organized to celebrate the bicentennial of the movement of the county seat to Dulles Town Borough, which occurs, I think, in June 2nd, or at least around that time, it's a week-long event. Has the board had, and the motion, I mean, the question was tabled at the last meeting, has the board had an opportunity to consider the request, and are there any other comments on the request?
I don't, I'll defer to Stephanie for a minute, but I don't think there's been any discussion initiated by the Borough.
By the Borough or by the committee?
I'm sorry.
By the bicentennial committee?
By the committee.
No, they've only indicated that in addition to the fees that were mentioned previously about the Showmobile, that any fees for the special exception permit, which run about $100, $150, also be waived. So they won.
Well, we also have the issue with the cost to the police to...
Right.
They were willing to pay those costs, I think.
Yeah, personnel costs, they were willing to pay. And they would certainly like to have the fire police, which is obviously an act for the chief to designate them, but there is a fee to have them as well. Now, whether or not the fire company is going to absorb those or not, I don't know. They seem to think they might.
But there's still a cost add to that, to have the fire police, am I correct?
There is.
They did indicate that that wasn't, you know, that they would be okay with that. I think that their thought was that, what's the piece called? I think that their thought was that, what's the piece called again?
Rental, the Showmobile.
The Showmobile was, you know, Doylestown Township, they were celebrating Doylestown, therefore, you know, it was like a community piece, let's, so really their big thing was waiving the rental fee of that.
Rental fee and the costs associated with operating it, that I recall from meeting...
Personnel that we need.
Personnel costs.
Okay, right.
That's two-part, because that was their initial request, but I think they would give in on the fees for the staff to operate it.
Okay, all right, so they would reimburse us our personnel costs, whether it be police, fire, or staff to operate...
It was more of the hourly rental that they were, that they had referred to.
And that's $1,200 a day?
It's $1,200 for the two days that they needed. They need about eight hours on one day and about four to five on the next.
And that's rental, that's income to us, that's not outlaying...
Yes, that is income, that is income to us.
It just, if this is such an important part, I don't see why we should be discussing what's in and what's out of it. They should be here with their counterproposal, in my opinion. We're here saying, I think it was this, no, I thought it was that. I'm willing to table it for one more meeting or make a decision now, but I was hoping that there would be some kind of representation for what they would like after we spoke, because all these things were brought up, and we're still not sure whether, oh yeah, the fire police, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's the pleasure of what everyone wants to do.
When is the deadline?
Well, I'm not inclined to table anything like that. Let's make a decision.
Then I vote that we, I make a motion that we not expend any township funds for this event. I will add the caveat, if that's the right word, that we did say, instead of the deposit, instead of deposit back, deposit, you know, they're not going anywhere, we know where Doylestown Borough is, that we would at least save in that kind of, I'll say, administration...
Well, that would go back anyway, that's a...
Right, but so, don't even, we trust you, in other words. So that's my motion, not to expend any taxpayer dollars for it, but to extend the courtesy of not, you know, going through the deposit.
Your意思就是check.
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Any other comments or questions on that? Everyone okay with that? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I think that's...
I'm going to vote nay on that.
You're going to nay?
Yes.
You're going to vote nay?
Yes.
Do you care to explain why?
I just, because I, you know, again, I listened to, one of the things that caught me was that, again, putting out money to outside events, you know, you kind of set a precedent, but because it was, I mean, they got me with the idea of like, they were celebrating Doylestown, like, let us use the, you know, equipment, and I understand it's income to us, certainly, but there was a lot of cost involved, it was over $5,000 essentially what they were asking us for, so I felt like kind of working with them on, and again, I forget the name of the piece again, the Showmobile, it keeps getting me every time, but, you know, just kind of waiving that cost, I felt like, you know, that's just kind of where I'd line up on it, so...
Rick's motion just spoke to outweighing of our costs, not to whether we accept any rent.
I think he's suggesting that they do pay rental, right?
Yeah, they pay rental.
Yeah.
If they want the Showmobile, they can pay us.
He was just saying no to a deposit.
It's the deposit, the requirement is, and actually you'll save them $1,000 off that five, because there's a requirement, and that was included, that each rental requires a $1,000 deposit, and since that would be that out in back, I would say, we know the group, I would say use it as one deposit for both days.
Why did it no deposits, because he said there was no need for a deposit?
No deposit.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, no deposit then?
No deposit.
I don't know where they live.
All the other costs they would do.
They have to pay for it.
As I understand...
No deposit, so that saves them...
So I understand the motion, the board is saying that you will, if you choose to use the Showmobile, you will pay the ordinary rental, you will not be required to post a deposit, and you'll outlay whatever township outlays for costs of labor and personnel, you reimburse the township, that's what I understand it meant.
And that includes the police.
Right.
Does everyone understand that to be the motion that we voted on? Okay.
Yes.
Very good. And just to clarify, it's not the Borough that's requesting this money, it's a committee of volunteers that are acting on behalf of this celebration.
Good point.
We have not gotten a request from Doylestown Borough to waive any of our fees or costs. Everyone understands that.
That's a good point.
Okay. All right, now, new business, destination, Peace Valley Pedestrian Bridge and Trail.
This is something that we had received a grant before for the feasibility study, we're now moving on with construction. The application is going in this week. This will take us in the first part of it along the Pine Run, through Cover Bridge Park and New Britton Borough. We'll do a pedestrian bridge over the creek at where the Cover Bridge is sort of parallel to it, and you'll be able to drop onto our existing path on Keely, take you up to the light at Ferry Road. This is a project that we've been working on in the Bike Hike Committee for some time, and we're looking forward to submitting this grant if awarded, which, it's going to be six months before the award's even announced. We would certainly like to see where, if we can get this grant and move this forward.
The board has to vote to authorize the application, which is why the resolution is necessary, so that, I'll put that in the form of a motion, is there a second?
One second.
Any questions on the action here? All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Good deal.
Declaration of obsolescence, love that word. Dick, do you want to speak to that, or do we need to speak to these obsolete things?
I think you have Dick's memo and a list of items that we would like to send to auction.
Say we got some junk sitting around, I'd like to get rid of it.
Make some money out of it.
We could put some money in the bank.
Don't we need a motion on that?
Yeah, because you're authorizing its disposal.
Is there a motion to authorize a disposal under the Declaration of Obsolescence?
No more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now, land development, Eastburn Track.
Before you, tonight is your consideration of a preliminary subdivision plan for the Eastburn Track. The applicant seeking your approval of subdivided tax parcels 9-22-89 and 9-22-89-1 into nine single-family lots, one of the lots to be occupied by the existing farmhouse. Plans were prepared by Gilmore Associates, they were dated October 28, 2011, and were last revised December 28, 2011. Your planning commission has recommended approval with conditions. I would note that I've obviously generated the appropriate conditions, but one of the issues that requires some board comment and discussion has to do with road improvements and things related to that, because as you know, one of the waivers requested is to not be required to widen short road, also to have a narrower street than that which is proposed, also not to put curves along short road or install a bike path. And you've seen Mr. Zaveta's, pardon, Mr. Canales's letter as to value. There's also a request that's out there that has come from the municipal authority related to needing a location for a proposed well, which obviously has value. So, with that in mind, Mr. Place, would you just sort of give the board a brief description or show what the plan's about so that there's some idea for new members, what you're proposing?
Absolutely. Would you rather me zoom in on this one or...
Whatever's the best way for you to describe it and show people what it's about.
Sandra will be happy you're using your microphone.
You ordered me to use it.
Yep, yeah. Thank you.
Hopefully he can hear me. Okay. The site fronts on Short Road and Windover Lane, Windover Lane being on the north side of the property, Short Road being the frontage along the southern portion. As was already spoken, there is one existing residence, which is the Eastburn residence, she's been there for many, many years. We're subdividing into nine total lots, eight proposed lots. We have numerous waivers in front of you that we've spoke about on other notes. At this point, we are willing to offer up a site for the proposed public well. We think the general location would be to the northwestern portion of where the site was, that's what was previously discussed. As of right now, we're proposing public wells for our lots with the option of tying into the public in the future. The reason for that is this development will be constructed well before the public well is in place. What's that?
Private.
Private wells, I'm sorry, did I say public? I apologize.
No, you did.
Private wells, I'm sorry.
I wrote it down.
Each lot will have its own well, how about that? That being said, the applicant is willing to make an offer for the fees as a lump sum. We're willing to offer $10,000 a lot, nine lots times 10, $90,000. We're also willing to pay the recreation fee, which is required. That being said, we also said we're going to donate the land for the public well with the option that we can tie in in future, but we're not going to be forced to tie in to the public system.
I don't think the ordinance does not require you to tie in the public water unless there's a, you have a well that's got funky stuff in it, so there's no ordinance requirements.
Okay.
But you're going to create the superstructure, I mean, superstructure, the infrastructure to allow those folks to tie in if they want to at the future? No, they're not.
They're not doing that, because they don't even have approvals on DRBC or anyone else for these wells. It's up to the authority to do that.
I'm sorry, I thought that's what...
Now, in addition, you had some caveats, did you not?
Did you want to?
About, I think that what I understand from conversation with Mr. Place, that the well site is subject to two things, number one, the exact location would be up to the agreement of the owner and the authority, and number two, that the appearance of the well-related facilities be also subject to the approval of the owner, so that you're not putting some, you know, ugly Mexican building in the middle of a colonial development. Well, I meant different style, you know, like with, like a roof or something. Like a Chi-Chi's or something.
Any of all around structures related to the well and its related fencing building, et cetera, and respective screening if needed.
Can you reiterate what you just said, so it gets on the record?
Sure.
Yeah. Give him the microphone, there you go.
We would...
Thank you.
With regards to the public well, we would want to make sure that the well and related structure are in keeping with the theme of the community that we're creating. As such, we would like to be part of the well location and have a say and approval of any of the above-ground componentry, which the well-related pump house and/or well structures that are above ground and having an impact on our community.
Makes sense. You all right with that, Director of Water?
I think we can make it work.
You can make that work.
Good.
Are there any other conditions?
I thought there was a request that the applicant not be required to escrow for the non-public portions of the private road. Is that correct, Mr. Place?
That is correct.
And I think that you also requested it not be inspected, and I think I told you township would require that those improvements be inspected, because they are required to be township standards, and township would want to make sure that they in fact are meeting those standards.
Correct.
So are there any other caveats before I...
Just to clarify, one other one, with the granting of the public well, we were also seeking relief from performing a hydrogeology study.
Well, that's on a list of waivers I was coming to.
Okay, sorry.
Now, I thought there was something about the staged payment of the dollars, too.
And Eric, just help me with the math, the total consideration between the, it's $90,000, $10,000 per lot for the nine inclusive of Mrs. Eastburn's existing residents, plus an additional, what, please?
It's an additional $1,880 for the eight proposed lots.
Each.
Each, for nothing, for each new lot.
Each new lot, not...
Comes to about $105,000 roughly by a couple of hundred...
That would be correct, approximately $105,000. We would respectfully request the board to entertain taking that $105,000, divide it by eight, which would be the new building lots, and those funds would be paid in full on a per-lot basis at time of issuance of the building permit. So as we are able to move forward with a sale or conveyance of the lot drawing a building permit, we would then fund the $8,000.
I have to tell you, Mr. Zaveta, I'm not inclined to do that. We've done that in other developments, and the properties weren't developed or whatever, and we got stuck with not receiving the intended fees. I mean, there has to be some surety that whether you build the eight lots or not, and build the eight properties or not, that money would still be forthcoming. Am I right? I mean, that's just my, I'm not speaking for the board, that's just my position.
Could I then complicate that slightly with your permission?
Sure.
Could we say that it would be predicated on per lot, but a maximum of three years?
Maximum of three years?
Yeah, we would be paying the $8,000 per lot, but at the three-year anniversary, the balance of anything unpaid would be due in full. I mean, that leaves you an awful lot of horsepower with certificates of occupancies, building permits, et cetera, to feel comfortable that you're in control.
I'm getting the sense that that's okay.
I think it would work.
We appreciate your flexibility.
Thank you.
Are there any other little caveats, Mr. Place, or should I articulate what I think is...
I just want to say for the benefit of the board that you may or not, you probably know this, but this was originally a 15-lot development that has been re-engineered to this much more, you know, much smaller lot development. So there, I think a lot of work went into this to get it to a more appropriate community for that residential area of Doylestown Township, so I just wanted, I don't know if you guys knew that, so I wanted to point that out here. We're going from 15 to eight new places.
If the board was inclined to approve the preliminary subdivision plan, be subject to the following condition. One, compliance with the Boucher &amp; James report dated January 31, 2012, to the extent we have not dealt with other issues as a result of this approval. Next, compliance with the Penoni report dated November 18, 2011, again with the same caveat I just mentioned. Next, compliance with the Pickering Courts and Somerson letter dated January 23, 2012, with the same caveat and with the following waivers being granted. 153-20 parentheses 10, so as not be required to show features within 400 feet. Next, Section 153-24A6A with respect to alignment of streets and extensions. Next, 153-24AA8 related to the width of private streets. Next, Section 153-24B1, again with respect to minimum cartway width. Next, Section 153-24B2A related to the proposed, any improvements to short road. Next, 153-25C to be relieved of responsibility to construct a bike and hike path. Next, 153-26 related to responsibility to construct curves along residential streets and private streets. Next, Section 153-27A5 requiring dryways to be a maximum grade of 8%. Next, 153-34B3, which requires that all street trees, we plan along streets where suitable street trees do not exist, or this is basically a wooded lot. Next, Section 153-34B5 with respect to the landscaping in stormwater detention basins, doing more of a naturalized appearance. Next, the recreation land will be a fee in lieu of. Next, 153-39D1, which will require that no face slopes shall be steeper than 4:1, they're requesting 3:1, which I believe is appropriate. Next, they're asking a waiver of the requirements to conduct a hydrologic study in view of the fact this will be an authority location in the future. Next, Section 153-20C15 and 153-441 requiring the finding of all due soil test pits and boreings to find the seasonal high water table. An extra sheet of all permits with management having jurisdiction of the matter, including conservation, district, DEP, et cetera. Funding and execution of development financial security agreements, compliance with Bucks County Planning Commission report dated November 29, 2011, these dealt with hereafter. Next, compliance with the report received from Sinclair Salisbury. Next, the applicant will contribute a location for a well site for the Doylestown Municipal Authority with the understanding that there'll be no cost for the donation and that the location will be approved by the authority and the owner, and that the appearance of any above-ground facilities shall meet with mutual approval of the owner and the authority. Applicant to make a contribution of $90,000 for a fee in lieu of the improvements waived, plus pay the required fee in lieu of $1,880 for each of the new lots, with the understanding that 1/8 of that total we paid as building permits are requested, with the understanding that all will be paid within three years of the date of the execution of the development financial security agreement. Next, the applicant will not be required to escrow for the private street portions of the private drive, but will... the private drive, but will be for the public portions, and they will be inspected by the township in accordance with normal practice. To my knowledge, Mr. Clayce, is that all the issues we need to cover?
That's correct.
Are those conditions acceptable to you and your client?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Eastburn Track under the conditions set forth by our solicitor.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have a question, if you don't mind. Jeff, is that including preliminary and final?
Just preliminary, was all that was?
Just wanted to clarify. That's why I --
Because the Planning Commission recommendation was just preliminary on the minutes.
It should have been preliminary slash final, that's what they said.
Well, that'll cost you more money, no.
We've only, they were reviewed for?
They were viewed as preliminarys?
Preliminary plans. I don't expect too many changes between preliminary and final, but they were reviewed as preliminary plans, and there would be other issues to discuss for final. Road right-of-way, dedication, street names, whether it's acceptable for the board accepting the homeowners association to maintain the private roads, those sort of things. Is there a way, without setting precedent, to address those?
After final approval.
After final, you know, I mean, giving approval pending that they meet the requirements in the review from the engineer and such? Well, these are board decisions, not --
I mean, you could add the additional condition, that it'll be considered a preliminary final with the understanding that all the requirements related to a final plan must be addressed to the satisfaction of the township engineer.
Well, should I amend my motion to state that?
You may.
I will amend my motion.
Not resecond, just let her get the motion down. Okay. I need a second on the amendment. Oh, second, excuse me. Okay, there's a motion and amendment, and there's a second to the amendment. Now, we have a question.
Could you clarify the waiving of the bike and hike requirement?
They're not going to be required to install it, but rather, they're going to pay the township $90,000 in lieu of a variety of improvements. My understanding is that the residents were not exactly ecstatic about having a bike path, and we have a nod from one of the planning commission members.
That's the, I can verify that. The residents in that area town wanted it maintained short as it is. They didn't want it wide, and they don't want it, and there's, because it's still kind of considered a rural road, bike and hike didn't seem to be there. All right, there's a motion, a second, and there's an amendment and a second to the motion. I'm not exactly sure I understand what the second, what the amendment is.
The amendment is that the applicant shall make the necessary changes to the plans to comply with the requirements for final plan, subject to the consent and approval of the township engineer that they can satisfy.
But we, the board, has to approve those?
No, no, they're just, they're more, you know, there's not much, a whole lot that you're going to, if he's got anything you need to approve, he'll come back and ask you for your consent.
Okay.
But that's pretty much.
Basically, anything that already needs to be approved by the board for final plan approval, I will make that presentation.
Most of it's just routine matters, nothing that's --
I agree, but I just want to make sure.
Like Scarborough Road, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
All right, I'm calling the questions, the motion with the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. You got preliminary and final with a caveat that the engineer has to go through the, there's bits and pieces to clean it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Move for the, oh, is that everything? Extension for the York and Swamp Associates till 7/20/12, till July 20, 2012.
Move to approve.
Is there a move to approve? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Another year. Looking for a motion to approve the bills list for April 3rd.
Show move.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the bills list, which everyone should have received electronically?
Which is working excellent, by the way.
Excellent, excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Announcements. We're next meeting on Tuesday, April 17. We're going to be closed Good Friday, this is Friday, April 6. The Fund Development Subcommittee for the Ways and Means Committee will hold a special meeting on April 11 at 9:00 a.m. at this building. Everyone is welcome to attend and encouraged to attend. The Pico Green Regional Invasive Species Educational Trail dedication is Friday, April 27, 10:00 a.m. at Central Park Environmental Education Area. Healthy kids, get up, get out and play is Saturday, 28, 2012, 11 to 5, at Central Park, sponsored by CB Cares, Doylestown Township, CB Family YMCA. Local Government Week, April 16 to 20. Zach, I expect some kind of essay on your local government, okay? Toto Truck, Saturday, May 5, 10 to 1, at Central Park. It's free event, shred event for township residents only. Saturday, May 12, 9 to noon at the administration building. And our annual Doylestown Township Golf outings, Monday, June 4. It's at Doylestown Country Club. Registration deadline is May 18, and it's a, usually it's morning tee-off time. It'll be morning lunch and, morning breakfast and box lunch and lots of fun. Seeing no other business, take a motion to adjourn?
Show move.
All right, we're adjourned. I'm assuming everyone's going.